Design guidelines, and so she is here to do that for us until we let her have the floor here. So Leah, appreciate your being willing to come on a Friday afternoon.
Thanks, thanks for having me. For those of you I don't know, if you have known us to be, but I'm Leah, the director of the Carlson College Center. We are a community design center in school architecture. And I'll just give you a quick plug, we're hosting a 40th anniversary, our center's been around for 40 years. And so on October 7th, we're hosting a symposium and a exhibit of all the work we've done in communities around the state. So we would love for you to come. We're raffling off some free design services for one lucky community. So that's incentive to come, it's very, we would encourage you to be there. And the information is on our website for more details. Okay, so I'm here to talk to you about the guidelines for the downtown historic district in Starville. And we've actually updated the title of this, it's the advisory standards for the downtown Starville Historic District. I think there are copies, does everybody have one? I'm just gonna run briefly through the format of the document so that you understand what they're there for. Table of contents shows you, we talk about historic preservation tax credits, we talk about architectural styles, building design, site design, and then the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. The purpose for these guidelines is really twofold. One, for any property owners who are building something or maintaining a new building, or the maintenance or rehab of a building downtown, give you some guidelines on that. And then encourage property owners to apply for tax credits. These are actually, these are friendly, their design to be user friendly, so folks in your historic planning commission, you as alderman can use them, the community development staff, property owners, anyone is invited to use these. We have a map in the book that highlights the perimeter and all the properties in the historic district, and then they're coded here so that you can find your property and understand the condition of that property. And then we go through some historic architectural styles that you find in the community, in the downtown area, and those are kind of labeled by characteristics of the style. We also have a section in the book that talks about the architectural styles and elements, and we kind of give you a guided definition of what the elements are. So folks who are not as familiar with this architectural language will understand what we refer to in recommendation section. And then we have a building design section where we highlight best practices and least desirable practices, so the things that are not in compliance and that you don't recommend, those are easily explained and highlighted in graphic detail. Here's another example. And then we have a glossary at the end which describes the terminology. And then appendix as well, which describes the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation, so that if you want more information about tax credits, that's available. So, that's, that's the guidelines in a nutshell. Any questions?
And how long ago was this done, Leah?
So we've been working on this for the past year, and I found to mention that Michael Fazio has been a humongous part of this project, and so he has really been leading this effort and brought to ground about from the MDAH in partnership with us, and so this is really kind of his take that we've been working with him on.
Okay, are there recommendations that come out of this, or is this just for information?
They're advisory guidelines. So best practices, like the, this kind of shows you what to do with a facade or what not to do, and we've got several different examples, what to do with windows, what to do with doors, what to do with logins, that sort of thing. And so all those kind of best practices, suggestions are in.
Okay, now what are we gonna do with this? We gonna gather all the property owners in downtown together and go?
Well, I think when you have a property owner that starts to rehabilitate a facade, or moves in and wants to completely overhaul the facade, I think, you know, you sit down with them and then go through this.
But this would be advisory, not compulsory.
It's up to you in terms of how you want to adopt it and make it.
Okay, and Main Street is party to this as well, the Main Street?
I believe they've seen it, yes.
They've seen it, okay. So you haven't presented it to the Main Street Board?
I think Dr. Fazio may have done that at some point, but not the final document.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna touch base with them at some point and see if that's something that they, because I would think those, all those people on Main Street, some of them have shops, some of them own the buildings, some of them don't own the buildings, but they need to, they certainly need to be made aware of all of this, so.
Yes. Leah, thank, I'm sorry. Thank y'all for doing this, I think this will be, once we dive into it a little bit, and I'm looking forward to seeing when everything was built and that kind of thing too, that's interesting for me. So the buildings is in the, what is classified as the historic downtown, is that the boundary is of what's in the study?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah. Those are clearly marked.
Is that a national stor-, and what, what historical designation does our downtown have? Is it, is it just defined as historic because of its age, or has it been designated because of, by the National Regi-, or?
So I believe, and this talks about it in here, there are five historic districts within our community, and those are labeled in here.
And this is one of them.
Right.
I love this picture.
Yeah.
That's, that's just really amazing.
So I guess enough of these buildings, when this thing was up, to be able to become a national historic district, enough of them had to be conforming for it to be granted as a historic status.
Right, and so there is a, on that, on the chart, it talks about, there's a column here that talks about conforming and non-conforming, or contributing and not.
Contributing, sorry.
And so that status is listed in this chart, so whether you'll be eligible for tax credits or not. But really, this is supposed to be in place, you know, if you have a business owner that comes in and wants to do something outlandish, like paint the facade orange or that sort of thing, you know, you wanna kind of get this in their.
Guide them.
Hands and guide them.
Okay, 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 well, thank you very much, any other questions? We appreciate it, and we are excited for your 40th anniversary there, and hopefully we'll, some of us will be able to make it by.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Kemp, the other.
Stand, I'll fill up right here over for you, is that okay?
Yep, it's fine, you're gonna run the, okay, Joel, and the driver team, steering wheel team?
So, I never had to follow one, I was much better at half than the presentation, so this is a first for me, but I'll be with you guys here. The mayor asked me to just give a brief update on the capital improvement projects. And two that she was really specifically wanting to talk about were Loxley and Louisville Street, because we have, we've encountered a couple of small minor, I consider not minor, but not major issues on those, so we, just to kind of get the board an update on where we are, kind of where we're headed, what the status on those were. So I thought this would also be a good opportunity to just kind of give a brief recap on some of the work that we've done this summer, some of the projects that we've been able to complete with our capital improvement funds. And I know we've had a lot of work going on, so I went out and took some photos too, because I know we've been working north, south, east, and west, and I just wanted to provide the board briefly with an update on, on just some of the projects that we completed, some that we're working on, and then some that are, that are kind of on the horizon, that you can kind of be thinking about and talking to constituents about if they ask you about. So first of all, you know, the big project is, we completed our 2019 street improvement overlay project, completed over three miles, but we actually did a lot of striping this year as well, on some streets that were still in pretty good condition, but the striping had really kind of faded, so really we improved, if you want to count that as an improvement, much more than three miles, a little under a million dollars, you know, we're trying to shoot for about a million dollars per year on the overlays. The other pretty substantial project we did this year as far as impact is, we did the soil cement chip seal on six roadways in the community. I just showed you a picture here of three of the finished product, I think they turned out really well. Some up in the Rock Hill community, one in Alderman Bombs Ward there on Cedar Creek Lane, one obviously on the south side of town in Henderson Road right there in the middle photo. And I think, if I had to personally say, I think Henderson Road probably had the biggest transformation, because, you know, luckily, the county came in on Treasure Hendricks, Vandydale, some of the Rock Hill roads, and did a lot of clay gravel and did some pipe work. Well Henderson had really just become really, almost impassable, honestly, from a drainage standpoint, we had the culvert work filled in, just really a problem. And so I would, I would encourage you if you're on the south side of town, go look at Henderson Road, much improved. We proved over a mile of these types of roadways, a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so really a lot of bang for your buck there. We also did quite a number of pedestrian projects this year, the West Side Drive sidewalk, which I've seen a lot of people using, really was that last missing link between Ree Road and Long Street and the park, and so really, really thought that was a beneficial project. And we made a great connection there to the Brick Fire, we had a great working relationship with them, the Taylors, they were really excited about it, so their kids now, after school and their summer program, kids can now have a safe and ADA accessible route to the, to the park. College View Sidewalk is another one that we, we recently completed, providing a very critical missing link from downtown in the Nash Street Historic District all the way into campus. Of course, our section of the project was, was basically from Aiken Village up the hill to Nash Street, but as you know, if you've been through there recently, you know that MSU has, has also provided a lot of sidewalk improvements from that point all the way east into campus, so another great connection between the city and campus. This sidewalk, we built it a little bit wider than our typical, this is a six feet wide instead of five, simply because of all the game day traffic, game day pedestrians that you're seeing using that right there. So already getting a ton of use on that as well. We have one project going on, undergoing right now, as part of our capital improvement project on Central Avenue, if you go down there, you'll see a, so a lot of activity work going on there. And then one of the, probably the next projects to come on, online, is the Highway 12 sidewalk project, as y'all know, we've been talking about this for quite a while. We set up some of our kind of priorities in the spring, and we're scheduled to open bids on that, this coming up Monday. So keep your fingers crossed for very competitive bids. You can see the, the listing here that the board approved from a priority standpoint, and then the cost of each section. We're, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of projects, we probably only have plus to three hundred thousand dollars of inflation. So depending on the, how the bids come back, you know, I'll be kind of talking about that next Tuesday night on how the direction the board wants to go from that standpoint. But I am hopeful that we can get started on that late October, early November. There's a hundred and twenty day calendar, calendar day contract on that, so looking at, basically through the winter would be that construction timeline. And then quite, right behind that, and piggybacking on that same project, is the linkage project, this is the multi-use path that's gonna go from the intersection of Spring and 12 into campus into the, and the theater. We're, we're moving that project ahead, this one is actually a, a project that's funded by Federal Highway Administration of MDOT, the Highway 12 project is, is MDOT funds, but it's, it's, it's just a different project process, much quicker, much easier. This one is just gonna take a little bit longer, because there's just a different process when you have federal, federal highway dollars involved. So the next step for that is, we've already scheduled our field review, which will be next month, and then we're projecting to advertise a bid in April of next year and start next summer. And that's, that according to our schedule, we think that we can meet that, barring some kind of unforeseen issues. And of course, we're, have a lot of other types of private developments going on that our inspector, engineering inspector is overseeing. All of this is gonna be city infrastructure eventually, so we're, we're really paying close attention to that, and make sure they're building it to city standards, and this are just a few of this, of the things that he's looking at, but obviously the subdivisions are, are, are big amounts of infrastructure that we're taking in, so we're taking it closer on those.
Edward, excuse me, has he caught some mistakes and things and a lot of that?
Yes, yes, yeah, doing a lot of, doing a lot of, I mean, he's out of all these projects every day, a lot of times he'll be out there multiple times a day, but he, but he is catching materials, methods, types of, even, even construction, I guess you'd say, construction means and methods, that the contractor's doing, probably not purposefully, but is ultimately gonna be a problem. So he's doing a lot of education, communicates with them really well. We're actually to the point where we're getting ready to do a final inspection on Portico and Magnolia's at Vinbrook, and we just did the Portico punch list last, this week actually, and, and the, the number of outstanding items that we typically see on the end of those subdivision punch lists is much less than we've seen in the past. So a lot of those issues are being addressed as we go. Yeah, I think, I think all in all, we're, we're getting a much better product for, for what we're taking on. So one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is the Louisville Street multi-use path, as y'all know, we've been talking about this project, it seems like for five years or more, but it is, it probably seems like it's taken about that long to construct it, in towns especially if you live down Louisville Street. But these are some of the original project details, they were given a notice proceeding back in November, the contract amount is right under 1.6 million dollars. And by the way, our, that does much more than our original grant ask, MDOT has provided some additional funds on that, due to the piping of the, of the ditch right there by Louisville Street, and some other unforeseen things. So our total match on that, we, we had to pay for this a hundred percent, our total match is that, 20% of that plus that is around 467,000, what is it gonna ultimately cost the city? So the status, everybody wants to know, what's it gonna be done? And as of this week, we've, the contractor unfortunately is already over his time, so we're in liquidated damages right now, he's about 10% over on his time, that expired on September 13th, but he's only 75% done with the work, so there's still quite a bit of work left to be done. According to, to our inspectors who are out there every day, they think that it'll be completed around Calhoun, so we're still about another month away on that. The mayor asked me to kind of give a little bit about some of the reasons for delay, I think one of the reasons why is, and ultimately is, in November, when the notice proceed was given, traditionally that is starting, kind of starting of the, of the wet time of year, however, the contractor really chose not to start working on it in earnest until after the new year. It was the same contractor who was doing the Lynn Lane widening project, and that was a, a tighter timeline from a construction contract standpoint, so I think they were focused more on that. And then when they actually did start working on it, which was in the spring, everybody knows what happened then, it started raining essentially for six months. So I think that he, they have put a lot of resources into the project now, if you go down there, you'll see multiple, even three crews working at one time, so I think they're trying in earnest to get it finished, but I think some of the efforts and some of the decisions that they made early on in the project is hampering right now. Any questions about Louisville?
I'll say that's another one that I've, I've seen people using, the completed portions of it already too.
Yeah, yeah, I meant to say, I have a photo of that right here. The contractor says the same thing, as soon as they get it poured, people are only using it. And it's, and, and this photograph here, I mean, this is where we're wanting to go, this is the finished product, and this is a, a photo of a lady using the other side of the road because the construction is going on here, so very, it's gonna be a, a great, a great benefit for that, for that neighborhood. And then the last project I wanted to talk about is the Loxley Way, of course, everybody maybe has been on Loxley Way, this is kind of the overall, it was an over million dollar project, but because we shared the match with three entities on that, we only paid $62,000 for that, we got a brand new overlayed street with new striping, and, and obviously another critical connection to went to the university, it's pretty amazing that we made two new connections just this summer from these two projects, this one in College View. But everybody wants to know, you know, we, we did our final inspection, I think, two weeks ago, well, the, the week prior to that, we had the, the big water main issue over there, and so the mayor wanted me to kind of brief the board on what we are working on, Atmos is, is kind of reviewing this plan right here, but I've been in contact with their engineer pretty closely. And, you know, the balance I'm trying to, to make is what's fair to Atmos, but also what's fair to the city, and I've heard quite a number of people say, we, we want the, we want the roadway to look like it never happened, you know, and unfortunately, there's always gonna, unless you overlay that entire roadway all the way from beginning to end, there will definitely be a seam at some point. So what I've recommended and what we're working on right now is going back to the original project limits there at Montgomery, so those will be the same tie-ins, and then coming up, this is actually where the most damage was done, the asphalt is rippled, that had all come out, go down two feet from the base all the way up, new curb and gutter there, and I'm recommending to go back past this last, or not last driveway, but this driveway here, to not interfere with this green paint, because I think it's gonna be difficult to get that all matched up, we'll have to come back and redo basically from this point all the way back. There will be a seam right here, but like I said, you're, you're gonna have that point at some point.
So replace both sides all the way down?
All the way down, yeah, is, is my recognition, from curb to curb, all the way down, that will be all, that will be removal of the top layer of asphalt, putting a new one down, of course, the full depth replacement in the failure areas, and then re-striping it basically back to the way it is now.
Edward, I think that's, I'm certainly supportive of that. One, at the intersection, there is a hole that I haven't gotten out and inspected, but it's certainly a noticeable hole, and I would say, my guess is, it's due to all that water finding that spot, and so that may be one, just to, I don't know, that, if milling down, or if there needs to be some base, if that caused any further damage, but it's cert-
Is that right in this general area?
It is, yeah, yeah, it is absolutely right in there.
Yeah, that's, that's due to, they had to dig that up to find a water valve.
Gotcha.
So we will, we'll be raising those valves up to make it sprayed, so we'll have to dig down, utilities have to dig down sometimes.
Yeah, okay, I figured that was associated in some way.
Yeah, but if you know, I mean, of course, they, this was a big hole here that they had come back out and temporary patched, we have a lot of scarring on the pavement through here, from the, from the bucket marks, of course, the digging in the intersection due to finding valves, so, you know, that, that's kind of how we arrived, so we encompassed all of those areas. Last, I thought this was a fun picture, when we were doing the final inspection on Portico last week, we, we were looking at the ditch upon, two little falls ran out, so that, that pretty cool, so I'll leave you on that.
Don't tell that to Ben, they may not like it.
Any questions?
Well, before you go, well, actually, you can go, but I'm gonna mention your name. So one of the things that is really good news from my perspective is, we now have a plan going forward to get a regional transportation plan. MSU, the county, the city, and MDOT, and MDOT is spearheading this, they have a consultant, who's the consultant, Edward?
Neil Schaefer.
Neil Schaefer is doing that, but, okay, well, there were some other guys at the table that I think were actually probably MDOT people, but anyway, we're, we're moving forward with it, Edward's gonna be the contact point, but we're going to look at having a, a regional transportation plan that will help us plan well out into the future, and show areas that we want to consider for extensions like Stark Road and Hospital Road, and maybe, you know, Shadowwood or, or whatever, so, and how that would tie in with the university and with the, the county, and so looking forward to that, and, and MDOT is, is funding that, and so that is, that's something that they have the ability to do. So Edward is our contact point for all of that, but as we go along and find out more, we'll certainly keep you in the surprise.
We're planning that too.
Yeah.
There, there's going to be, they're developing the scope right now on that project, and there's gonna be a lot of public input opportunities on that, they're really gonna gauge that as well as from the board, so be, be thinking about any kind of, you know, big picture things, or, you know, problem areas that you know, or connections that we need to make. Really, our goal is not only from a vehicular roadway connection standpoint, but also bike pit, any kind of connections or plans that, that we could use, and really, I would love for, to see a, a final document that could use it to be our roadmap essentially in how to spend those infrastructure dollars for the next five, 10, 20 years, or so, 30 years, yeah.
And that is the goal, and, and I was gonna say, you know, the whole rail to, rail to trail thing is a part of that, and I think we have some real opportunities, I'm just delighted that MDOT took that and said that they could help us with it, because there were other communities that have spent a lot of money on that, so we are very fortunate. Yeah, so, thank you, Edward. Any questions to Edward before we, okay, all right. The other thing I was gonna mention real quickly, I know Alma Walker's got to go, but I was at an MML meeting this morning, and one of the things that they're looking at in the legislature, but apparently when we got this, this capital matching money from the state, they took into account things like excluding bonds, the amount you spend from bonds, they did not take into account the amount you spent on grants, and so they're looking to go back and re-swizzle that legislation so that grants are excluded from it, but if we had to match grants with the amount of money that we've gotten from grants, we would be hard pressed, I think, to, to be able to do that. So anyway, and they used example of Corinth, apparently Corinth had gotten enough grants that, using them as a, as the structure, they would have to spend eight million dollars to get the funds from the state because they had so many grants. So we've been very fortunate in getting grants, but that was not excluded from that, so we, that'll be something that MML, and thank goodness for MML, MML is looking at, so. Okay, thank you. We will go into the, go into the agenda if everybody's ready, unless there's anything else they want to talk about. All right, fairly light agenda, guys, the minutes of the September 13th, Chris, if you blessed those?
Yes, ma'am.
Any issues with consent for those folks? Okay. And I think we have some, some folks for me to introduce, anybody have any comments that they want to mention or highlight at the board meeting? Okay. Mr. Bateman is gonna be coming from the Starville Arts Council and do us kind of an update on what they're doing, and I think they're, they're making some changes, and he wanted to highlight, I think, their budget and that sort of thing, and the activities they've got coming up in the year. Ms. Karaman is coming back for the Keep Starville Beautiful report, so she will be there. We will be having the first public hearing on the updated placemat maps for the comprehensive plan, and is Mr. Havlin gonna be doing that?
Yes.
Dr. Kemp? Okay, thank you. And that is in the packet, it's got a link to the packet, as I recall, Joel, isn't that correct?
That's right.
Because it's a big, it's a big document, so the, the packet's just got a link to it, so. And then under, we've got the two items that were associated with the public hearing for the dilapidated structures, so that would be the one for Roosevelt Taylor Senior Drive, and the other one for Apple Street, both of those will be public hearings. And then under Mayor's Business, well, I'll be providing the exceeded 2% budget, and y'all are welcome to put that on consent if you would like. are welcome to put that on consent if you would like. It's got, the documents are in there. So, um, that is, uh, just, as, as we normally do, that's approval of the, of the 2% budgets required by the legislation. And actually, I'm a little late in presenting it. It should have been done back in August or so, but anyway. Um, so, we've got that budget, the visitor convention, the council is coming in for theirs. Um, I believe Jennifer Prather is going to come for that one, or else the president of the VCC, and I'm not sure who that is right now, to be honest. I can't remember who the, to call on who that would be, but they're going to be presenting their 2% budget. Uh, Lisa, have you heard from them? Have you gotten anything from them?
No.
Okay, they were supposed to provide that, but if not, we'll, we'll see if we can't get that at the table. It's a fairly simple, simple structure. All right, item C is this, um, requesting a rail banking for rails to trails. You know, we've got Kansas City Southern running right through the middle of town, and, uh, apparently, roughly speaking, is about 6.2 miles or so. Um, Edward was kind enough to have the intern take a look at what it was in, and it's about 22 miles inside Octobah County, is about six or more miles inside the city of Starkville. And then, it touches briefly West Point, and it touches a little more, um, Ackerman and Choctaw County, but the preponderance of it is in Octobah County and city of Starkville. And, as I am understanding and having read some, rail banking and abandonment of rails are the two ways that you get your hands on the rails from, from a railroad track perspective. If they abandon it, then it becomes much more problematic because each piece of property that was taken by the federal government to provide a railway space then sort of goes back. Those owners have an opportunity to take it back. It is sheets back to those owners. So, um, it's much more, um, effective and, and less costly and quicker to have a rail, a ban, uh, rail, I'm sorry, rail banking, which means that the rail right of way stays in place, but you remove the rails and you can then use it. And so, there is a petition opportunity to go forward to the Surface Transportation Board to ask them if they would allow us to rail bank it. And so, you make that petition before KCS decides to abandon it because you sort of get on the front end of that. And so, that's what this is about, is just a resolution that would be supportive of that, which means we can then kind of go forward and do something proactive with it. So, that's the effort. Alderman, Vaughn, I see you're, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were about to say something. Okay. But, that's what that's about, so, you know-
What all is this encompassed? What distance from where to where?
Well, the section-
Proposed.
Was West Point to Ackerman, which is 40 miles. And, West Point, as I said, it's just got a little piece. Octobah County's got like 22 miles. We've got six.
So, future rails to trail might be from Ackerman, too?
Ackerman to West Point, be about 40 miles.
Right near there.
Yeah, and the Longleaf and the Tanglefoot are both about 40 miles.
That one's 44, and the one down here, that one, 41 or 38 or something.
Yeah, yeah. So, it would be something that would be consignably wonderful for us. It would change, it would change the dynamics of, of us and who I think we are and how we're, how we're viewed. I think it'd be a tremendous asset. So, we don't have to adopt the resolution. I drafted it thinking that we could move this forward. We don't have to take it to them immediately. We can do more due diligence research. I'm trying to get, I drafted one for the county. Hopefully, they'll be considering doing this as well so that it would be a nice chunk, and if they don't, we could still have something that allows you to go from the research park to Cornerstone Park within the city. So, it's an, it's another opportunity for us. So, I will be doing some more research. Three Rivers PDD did the one at Tanglefoot up in Pontotock, and so, I'm going to go up there and visit with them about what all they had to do to get that done, and we will be coming back. So, as usual, I'm on the leading edge of something, but this is almost a no harm, no foul from my perspective, but I'm also perfectly comfortable if you want to not do it and you just want to consider it. So, I'm just kind of leaving that one and everybody-
What downside would it be to it?
Well, I don't think there is any downside at this point, but, you know, sometimes, you know, people want to think about it a little more, so.
The railroad retains the property, ultimately, right? Is there some type of long-term lease that happens in order to facilitate this, this rail's travel? With railroad could, at some point in time, if they needed that to put a railroad back in, they have the option to do that, right?
Yes, they could come back and do-
They're not armed, we're not armed by, I mean, it's, it's grant money to put, it builds a thing, and-
There's, there's lots of grant money out there. The only thing we would be taking on, if, if we pursued this in it, maintenance and liability, we'd have the liability associated with it.
But, are those things operated as a regional file, a, a regional, as a, thankful to operate as a regional-
Yes, yeah.
Thing, where not one county, one city, right, that everybody's taking on liability?
And, and I would see that, just like we operate the landfill, the Golden Triangle Regional, uh, Solid Waste Facility. Six counties, you know, this would be three counties and four cities, and, and hopefully, we can bring them all together. It would be a really cool thing because I know the Tanglefoot has had incredible amounts of economic development, people coming there, people all over the country, and actually internationally, I think, come there and ride trails around the United States. So, you have opportunities for people to come and, and make this a destination.
Well, I, I go up to, you know, which is, is a top, there's a trail out there, but, um, there'll be people from Tennessee and people from Oklahoma, you know, California, they just didn't know about it, and will get off and stop, and of course, they, they're starting to draw, and most of them starting to draw, and going south, but, um, and you always been, been named, somebody listed as one top small towns in the country, not present because of that, because, but that's one of the, the quality of life things that didn't went into fact, factored into that.
And they have maps that people follow and do that. Now, I have friends who follow those maps and, and all over the United States and go ride these trails. So, anyway, it's just an, it's just an opportunity for us to, I think, offer, offer something else to our constituents.
Edward's provided a map that must have been mounted in the visiting position here.
Cool, okay, yeah, yeah.
There's a point up there and going down through Starkville.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it cuts us right in half, y'all.
And Ackerman, and he, uh, provided the mileage charts.
Yeah, there's, there's your mileage, so.
Yeah.
Forty, forty-one, and that's rough, obviously, because we don't know exactly, you know, point to point, but, but that's a, that's a pretty nice strike, you know?
That's something I've been interested in for a long time. Glad to see, making some progress in that direction. There's no downside to me.
Kansas City Southern is making some progress in the-
Had, had, you ever made some inquiries with KCS on that?
Well, that was, I had, I got from a fairly good authority that KCS would not necessarily jump at it, but they're not going to fight it. So, if we ask for this from the Surface Transportation Board, then, um, we get ahead of them, and if they're willing to, to set it aside and not, not fight it, then they might be willing to, you know, come get their rails and say, we'll sell those for scrap.
And the only potential downside would be, if you ever got an industry out in the west industrial park that needed rail service, and it was enough, a big enough customer that KCS thought that could justify, never say never.
Well, I mean, we're about to build a bunch of ball fields out there, so good luck with that.
I'm just saying that that, if there's downside, it would be the fact that if there was a really big customer that they could just, they won't, and they won't improve rail unless they can justify the cap expense. But, if they could, if, if that were so, and they could justify, upgrade the rail from Ackerman over to Stark, then that would be, but the likelihood of that's not.
Well, and, and the reason they were there in the first place was to service Borden, and Borden has long since been gone, and it's been, yeah, 10 years since that rail's been active, even a little bit, just even as a, as a deadhead stocking.
I miss the railways.
Do you? Okay, not me. So, anyway, that's what this is about. We will let folks consider it as we, as we get to Tuesday. Uh, and the other one is Cornerstone Government Affairs. They have been incredibly helpful to us.
Consent.
Okay, excellent, that'd be good, thank you. And that is in the budget.
CND or, um, consent CND or just, just the Cornerstone?
What, the, the-
I'm, I'm, both, I'm assuming both have an issue.
Okay, you may get an issue with making resolutions, the issue, uh, let's see, okay. All righty, uh, then we have, this one, I hope that Ben would be here because Ben had asked me to, well, he had asked about the golf carts. You got that information and I did. I pulled the city of McGee, the city of Long Beach, uh, actually Oxford, um, and there's another lady I talked to today at, at this MML meeting. They also have the golf carts, uh, golf cart districts. And so, I took the city of McGee's legislation and I put that together, put a resolution together. So, that's what we're looking at, is the, is the possibility of asking the legislature. I've talked to our representative, Rob Robertson, I've talked to Representative Taylor, Chuck Taylor, and they, they both said that they don't see any problem with it. Um, and actually, at MML today, they said that, that there was a bill that was dropped that would just cover the entire state of Mississippi, saying if you want to do it by ordinance, you can do it by ordinance, but it didn't, it didn't make it to the governor's desk. So, that's the reason I thought I'd go ahead and go forward, even though they tell me that it's probably going to be dropped again, it may not succeed again. So, this will give us an opportunity at, by ordinance, to develop a golf cart district for whatever, you know, if you want to do it in Country Club Estates, if you want to do it in the cotton district, if you wanted to do it in Octobah Gardens, or you wanted to do it, uh, off of Long Street, for whatever reason, you wanted to do it in Green, you know, wherever, Green Oaks, wherever. Um, this would give us the opportunity to, by ordinance, designate those districts and allow them to operate. So, that's what this is about, is a, is that resolution. So, any issues with that from y'all's perspective? Okay. Well, I, I did it, put it under board business because Alderman Carver had been the one asking about getting it done, so, and I have not heard back from him. I sent it to him, I have not heard back from him on whether it's a thumbs up, thumbs down, so here we go with it, so we'll see what happens. Any issues for, um, putting that one on consent?
Leave it off.
Leave that one off? Okay, all right. Um, airport, any issues, Chris, that you know of related to, um, any of these, uh, the renewal of the school leases or any of that?
No, I've approved them all. I would just suggest that, that first A1, say Circle S Aviation Flight Training Agreement.
Flight training as opposed to school?
Yeah, Flight Training Agreement.
Okay.
Because we've already got a lease in place with them.
Okay.
Um, the other two are, are labeled just fine, and I've approved all of them. I think Rodney may still be getting the credit card agreement to Lisa, but, uh, everything's been approved.
Okay, all right. So, we change the language on that to Aviation Flight Training Agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any issues with those going on consent? Okay. All right, uh, then we have code enforcement. This is a public hearing on, uh, Garrett Road property, 225 Garrett Road, that is, um, overgrown, and it is, uh, extremely difficult, um, for us to get a judge to work with this in the sense that it's up at Circuit Court now, so we're taking another tact. Um, this is the 211911 that allows us to declare it as a nuisance, as much as we're doing Apple Street and Roosevelt Taylor Drive.
Do you want me to tag that just a little bit?
Please do, if you would.
So, the city proceeded by code enforcement against this particular property, and this individual lawyered up, and they filed a motion to dismiss, and the motion to dismiss was denied in municipal court. So, the municipal court ruled in Starkville's favor, but they've appealed that denial to Circuit Court. It was set for hearing last week. Lou Moore, the city prosecutor, was prepared to defend the appeal, uh, but they asked for a continuance or there was some kind of delay. And I happened to be over there on another matter when I saw this, and we said, you know, we can push this on two fronts. We can continue the code violation path, but also a 211911 path, which you guys control, and then the first one to the finish line gets the job done. But, it's a way to hit them on two fronts.
Yeah, and it's a property that desperately needs cleaning up, like a number of others that we have, so. Okay. Any, any problems with consent on this? This is just calling for public hearing, so. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, under planning, we have, uh, the special event. This is the same event that we have had in the past. It's the one that occurs out in the little roundabout out here, uh, at Christmas. So, and I realize special events are not going to be going on consent, but that's what that is. And then, the Starkville Area Arts Council, the Sunday Fun Day event, I believe this is the last one of the season, um, and this is one to, to close some streets, so that's what that's about. And the low bids for the sidewalk project, we, we won't get those until Monday. Is that accurate, Edward?
That's right.
So, we'll be waiting on those. Uh, Claim Stocket, I realize, will not go on consent. The Municipal Compliance Report, any issues with that one going on consent? That's the annual one, has to be done every year, so. Okay, thank you. Um, Fire Department, and the chief is just going to make a presentation on fire prevention on it. Uh, HR, we've got a driver in the sanitation services department, any issues with hiring, and then an authorization to hire an intern in the finance administration department. And this is the young man who has been sitting at the front desk, and so, uh, he's going to be an intern and working on minutes and that sort of thing for Lisa, so. And then, we, advertising for part-time reception, receptionist to, um, take care of the position he's leaving. That's right, so, all right. And then, advertising for a full-time custodian. Um, and Gary is not here to take that one on, but what has, what has occurred is, we are not happy with the contracted folks, and so, we are coming to the end of that, and we want to go, take it in-house and do it in-house, so.
And it's just essentially flipping of where the money is coded.
Right, so, so, okay. Any questions with, with advertising just for that? And then, under parks, we have polishing for the amount, or polishing for the, um, Jim and Rackeball Courts. That was the lower of two courts, co-up quotes, excuse me, any issue with that one? And then, we're going to leave this one off. Jason had some questions, but we were very fortunate again. Gary's been extremely successful in, uh, getting us grants. This is a $40,000 grant for, um, assistance in planning for the 10-minute walk effort that we're trying to do, find parks that are all located within 10 minutes walking from, from our residential neighborhood. So, that's what that's about, but we wanted more information, so we'll leave that one alone. Uh, Police Department is the instructor tactical shooting school. Any issues with that going on consent? And then, we have the sanitation department. We get to accept the bids for the rolls of garbage bags, and Lisa said that that was, or Calvin, I guess, said that that was, what, 99 cents per roll, less than it was last year. So, despite the fact that oil had gone up, apparently, we're getting lucky, so. Um, and then, we have the declaring the wrecked Mack front-end loader as, uh, loss and selling it for a payoff. And then, last but not least, um, a non-disclosure on energy. Terry, do you want to speak to that at all, or you, you or Chris on the non-disclosure piece of that?
Really, this is, uh, relates to some of the DPA's asking or the crap party agreement with the city of Mississippi and the DPA, any deal with some pricing information based on generators and several contract. Energy is now an agent or working with Mississippi State on a bigger energy project, and they need access to some of that data that was classified as to be, I guess, sensitive confidential information initially, trust. That's what this prosecutor is.
Okay, all right.
Allow, allow them to actually start looking at some of that test data.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any issues with that non-disclosure? Okay, thank you. And then, this is the last one that you may or may not, uh, keep coming, keep on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Kemp, this change, project change order, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the last basic change order, and, uh, if it is put on the rest, uh, finish that part.
Okay, all right, no issues there, okay, all right, thank you. And we have no, at this point, no knowledge of any reason for an executive session. But, anything anybody wants to discuss? All right, so SHS is going to win tonight, even though South Pinot is going to be tough, is that right?
It's going to be tough.
All right, okay, well, go state, go jackets, and everybody have a great weekend. Thank you all.